We have the copy in front of us. We discuss the resolution. A vote to read the resolution then becomes a vote to approve the resolution, and the reading is the final step.
We still got a motion on table? Is it a second?
Oh.
Do we need to restate?
Please.
The motion, okay. Would you please restate the motion?
My understanding is that Mr. Pownell would like to have resolutions handled in two distinctive steps, assigning a number and reading, discussing and voting.
That correct, sir?
Technically, you're beyond your realm of what's open for discussion, because that's a rule change.
Okay. So what's the course of action now?
It's outside the scope of what you're discussing.
What rule? Okay.
That's my concern, there's no rule.
Mr. Berry?
I guess, you know, maybe I'm a little slow here. I'm trying to figure out, you know, we've had this before us for over a month, two to three meetings, maybe. We've, you know, I mean, are we, I don't know why we can't discuss it. I mean, if anybody has a problem with it, then go ahead and vote on it to read.
Kayla? What do you recommend?
I think that what Mr. Berry has just outlined is the current procedure that the table has used and would be proper to follow. The motion that Mr. Pownell has made, if there was a point of order called, is out of order based on the fact that it is a rule change rather than a discussion of the motion that opened this discussion. And therefore, that needs to be made at a separate and permanent time to change the rules, if that's what the table so desires, at a different time. But I think Mr. Berry is in order with his discussion that you're now, you are discussing this resolution, and you should take a vote on this resolution, not on a rule change to affect how the resolution is approved or not.
Mr. Pownell?
Point of clarification on the motion, then. In the past, we voted to sign a number and read the resolution. At that time, it was voted yea or nay. There was no discussion. I mean, it was, once that was motioned and seconded and voted on, it was read, it was done. There's never been any discussion in the past three or four years. I understand what Mr. Berry is saying, which is true. If we have an opportunity to discuss it before it becomes the resolution, that's fine. But that's not what we've done in the past. So if that's changing the rule, then I will withdraw my motion to read the resolution.
Okay.
All my motion to discuss the resolution.
Second.
Okay. Do we have to withdraw the second if the motion's withdrawn?
Should be, yes.
Okay.
Second.
Okay.
I would still, my motion goes to discuss the resolution.
Mr. Pownell has withdrawn his motion. Ms. Alexander has withdrawn her second. Mr. Berry has made a motion to read the resolution as stated.
No, to discuss.
To discuss.
To discuss, okay.
As long as there's discussion.
Okay. Made in second to discuss, so discussions open, discuss. Mr. DeVito?
May I direct us to Mr. Pownell?
You can ask any question.
We, is this the amended amounts on the, or is that the present amounts?
That is the amended.
And might you give us what the, okay, that's from last week. Seventy-five, seventy-five, seventy-five and twenty-five. Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Now's your chance.
The title clarification for the clerk's benefit. The OD is not overdosed, it's of fees.
Okay. All right. Motion made in seconded. Mr. Balance?
There should probably be a space in between resolved and by. There probably should be a space after the comma following Arkansas on the last line here.
I'm typing it in.
Okay.
My typist doesn't get paid enough.
And I don't have the resolution book.
Okay.
So I don't know what the number would be. I can go downstairs if I want to get it.
One question, please.
Yes, ma'am. We're still in discussion.
Just for everyone's clarification, how did you arrive at these amounts, Mr. Pownell?
Well, part of it was they were eleven years old, and, excuse me, and looking at different issues that have been in the court planning and the times that things have gone back and forth. A lot of times it involves the billing official and city clerk time. And eleven years, I don't think that's too bad of an increase.
Okay. All right. We'll stand at ease until Ms. Clark gets back.
And it also corrects the title reference that was incorrect in the old, old code.
Okay. Okay. All right. For the time being, we're just standing at ease until she gets back with her book. So we can get this thing taken care of.
She gets back, you don't have a motion to vote on it.
I know.
You just are discussing.
Right.
Don't need to make.
Yeah. Do we need to make that with her presence?
Yeah, so she recorded.
Okay. Making sure. Let's get the resolution, so she can get it.
Yeah.
Okay. Back session. Do we need to make a motion to?
Give it a number and a read, for read it and approve it.
We have a motion to.
Make a motion, we give this a resolution number and read it.
Second.
Motion made in seconded. Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Your post.
Resolution number will be five eight zero.
Thank you. Then we'll have to read it.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, authorizing a schedule of fees for applications pertaining to Title 14 of the municipal code. Whereas section fourteen point oh eight point eleven authorizes the City Council to establish a schedule of fees, charges and expenses for conditional use permit applications, appeals and other matters pertaining to Title 14 of the Eureka Springs Municipal Code. Be it hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, the following fee schedule to be adopted. The fees are non-refundable and due at the time of application. All existing forms shall be updated accordingly and used until supply is exhausted. Conditional use permit $100, application for rezoning of property $100, variance request $100, and to reschedule a public hearing $50.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
No, we are, we are the approval.
Done.
It's approved.
One sentence.
Thank you. One down.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Number two on unfinished business is discussion of domestic fowl ordinance. I have a letter from, all right, motion to discuss, let's do that.
So moved.
Second.
Made in seconded, all right. I have a letter from Mr. Jim Morris attached to what he says is the current domestic fowl ordinance. And it states, and I'll read in the record, "The ordinance read and approved at the first reading of the City Council meeting on Thursday, April 11, 2011 was not the final draft as approved by the Planning Commission, January 26, 2011. There was a first reading of an ordinance regarding domestic fowl, chickens, by the City Council in the mid-October 2009. For some reason, the City Council set the ordinance to the Planning Commission to work over. We, the Planning Commission, first got the news of this by an article in the Citizen publication." Excuse me. And he asked a question, "Does the City Council keep a log of things sent to other working bodies? There should be a record of the City Council's actions somewhere." And under a sentence that says "the planning and commission process," originally received, "sent to the planning commission by the City Council on late October 2009 for the purpose of a definitive regulation regarding domestic fowl, mainly chickens, to be kept for personal use, eggs and fresh chickens. This was a crest, request, and I cannot talk to, this was a request by a number of local citizens. The first action of the PC, Planning Commission, was to separate the keeping of bees from the standing ordinance, mission accomplished, in quotations, and sent to the City Council for approval, date on record." Last item is the submitted domestic fowl ordinance twelve fifteen ten, in parentheses, zero one twenty-six eleven, intended to replace the standing ordinance, space, there's no number, was meant to stand alone as a section of the existing ordinance, just as the section regarding bees. Hope this helps. Jim Morris, Planning Commission." So with that, further discussion, it's open.
Can I weigh in on this?
I don't know that you can.
Well, I'm working on the ordinance, so.
Oh, you are working on it, okay. Okay. Go ahead.
All right. I talked with some of the Planning Commission members, and it has generally agreed that, yes, we did not have the right one at the last meeting. And if the one Mr. Morris just forwarded were altered primarily by changing some of the section numbers, it could mesh fairly easily with what's already on the books for.
Okay.
Animals. And I'm going forward with that.
I'd move to table this ordinance till the next meeting.
Motion made to table, is it a second?
Second.
Made in seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any further discussion? Yeah, this, I don't know how to guess a host up, but Mr. Pownell?
If, if the only reason we're tabling it is because of the numbering, there's been times that we've submitted ordinances for codification without numbers, and I think this is a good idea, that we get it straight, because I was concerned last meeting that
Okay. So we table till the next meeting then?
Animals were left out.
Okay. Next on the item is deer hunt update. I'll do the presentation, motion to discuss.
Moved. Second.
Made in seconded. All right, here's what we have currently. We were, we put out a survey request to the public, it's a request of the last council meeting, and as of today, we have 12 people who volunteered their property for a deer hunt. I guess, can we read the names of the, out loud on TV?
I would suggest you not.
All right. In, one person has 4.5 acres, which actually amounts to 46 lots of private property. The average size of lots are 20 by 80s. Another gentleman has eight acres off of Millholler Road and 25 acres off of Magnetic, he said could be used for deer hunt. Another gentleman has 280 acres off of Oil Springs Road, which he said could be used for deer hunt. We have made a map of where we think pretty close to where these properties are at, and we'll have this on file downstairs. We did property descriptions, and apparently this is pretty close. So we have had some positive input on the survey that we did. So, Mr. Pownell?
Are all those within the city limits?
Yes. Well, let me take that back. Magnetic, so I think it kind of runs in and out. It depends where his property lines is.
I think it runs, I think mostly in.
Two hundred acre one?
Two hundred and eighty acres off of Oil Springs Road between, actually, to be in behind Whispering Pines, which would be Bavarianian, yeah, Bavarianian, back in that area, all the way down to the creek bed that runs out of Black Bass Dam. Again, most of that looks like it's in the city limits.
See how it comes.
Oh, okay. Well, a portion of it's in the city limits, so apparently it can be hunted if this gentleman says so. Any further?
Okay. Does that include any of the city-owned property that's big enough to, including the ones that are volunteering? Have we looked at, because the original intent was to have the hunt on public property. So I think we need to address, are we going away from that because there isn't enough to hunt on? Or has some been identified that we could?
On city property, city-owned property, the only parts that we have big enough to hunt are probably going to be out on Leatherwood. And that's, you could say it's technically in the city since we have it, but I think it's at the city limits, corporate city limits. I'd have to go back and read the title, see what it says. So we are having some input on it now. Any further discussion? Any further questions? Mr. DeVito?
Would you go back to game and fish with telling them that we've got X hundred of acres?
No, sir. We didn't go back with them. They pretty much washed their hands of anything to do with it.
Their position was that there wasn't enough city property.
Right. For the survey, and they figured if there's no survey to be done, then it's kind of in the property owner's hands. Mr. Berry?
What about the game and fish conducting some sort of, I don't want to say licensing, but eligibility, like they do in other places, of qualifications of the bowhunter?
The way we understood it is that you have to comply with the current regulations for bow hunting, unless you set a specific time you want this hunt to occur, because we've not discussed that, is my understanding. Ms. Balance?
In ordinance number 2127, an ordinance calling for an election to refer the issue to allowing it one-time bow and arrow deer hunt, et cetera, et cetera. In section two, it says that said bow and arrow hunt would be according to the regulations promulgated and time set by the Arkansas Game and Fish Commission within the areas prescribed by the Arkansas Game and Fish Commission and their constitutional authority to regulate the game and fish population anywhere in the state of Arkansas. So to me, that says what the people voted on was to allow, allow this bow hunt according to the regulations promulgated and times set by the Arkansas Game and Fish Commission. So we're cutting them out of the equation?
No, ma'am. They said we have to comply with all their rules as bow hunting, the regs in the little pamphlet that you can get at Walmart. And there are certain times that that can be done, certain days. I think it starts in October and goes through February, I believe.
And to January, at least, I know.
So, thank you, ma'am. Mr. Pownell?
As far as what she just read was clarification that the citizens approved a one-time bow hunt. Does that supersede the code of no bow hunting within the city limits?
That's a point you have to discuss at the table. You'll have to change the ordinance to allow it, since it was voted on. I'm assuming Mr. Weaver can address that.
You, the citizens authorized this council to allow a one-time bow hunt. They did not by their vote, or at least the intent, I don't believe, was to allow it automatically. You would have to accrue it yet. And it would have to be to the rules and regulations as promulgated by the commission. That simply changed the rule, so to allow you to allow one-time bow hunt.
I just want to make sure that's understood, that if this thing comes and goes, that bow hunting is in the city limits. I don't want to start picking arrows out of my dog's butt.
Any further discussion on this? That's our report up to date. Any further changes? We'll make a report next time, okay? All right. Next on the list was number four, we postponed. So I guess it moves number five up to number four. Black Bass Dam update, it was just on the phone with Dee Perky-Pow today after we found out a while ago, I'm sorry, motion to discuss. Let's go back.
So moved.
Second.
Made in seconded. All right, now, due to the.
Do allow the discussion.
All right. All in favor of discussion?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Now, I thought it was going to be easy, just make a report. Okay. Anyway, due to the fact that we're supposed to have some semi-nasty weather, well, actually nasty weather for the next six days, myself and Chief Williams went out to Black Bass Dam to check the level of it. Now, as it stands, water is running over the spillway without any aid from anybody or pumps or anything. Called Dee Perky-Pow, he is still working on the information that he said he was in half force in the last meeting. He got tied up in another situation, and he didn't promise it would be here the next time, but he said he would do exactly his best. Now, back to the dam, took it upon myself in the capacity that I have to call Public Works and have them come out and start the six-inch drain, siphoning it down now. I can't tell you how much rain we're going to get, but they said four to five inches, and we don't want this thing going over the top again. So we're there now. If we need to run the four inches, we'll do that, too. So that's where we're at. Yes, sir?
And I'm feel sure Mr. Perky-Pow's done this, but have you or Public Works taken off photographic documentation of where we are today, so in case it does over top, we'll have visual evidence to give to FEMA or whoever.
No, sir, we didn't take any today. We were down there a while ago when the big one blew up, so we got out of there PDQ.
Might want to go down and have somebody go down and take some series of photographs, because FEMA likes to have it documented.
We'll check it tomorrow and access it. Any further discussion on this? All right, I'll end that report. Let's see. Okay, number six moved up to number five. This will be discussion on signatories on checks and security bonds, Ms. Balance and Dr. Kirkpatrick.
Move to discuss.
Second.
Motion made to move and discuss, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Discussion. Ms. Balance?
In an effort to make sure everything's above board, I'm not saying anything that ever has not been above board, but to make sure everything is above board, to ensure separation of power and checks and balances, I would move to instruct the city attorney to draw up a resolution that designates the mayor, the city clerk treasurer, and the mayor pro tem as signatories on the checking account, and remove all others.
Do we need to restate the motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Made in seconded, all in favor?
Mr. Weaver?
Mr. Weaver?
Before you do, would you clarify your motion as to you requiring two of the three or a particular order? What do you want in your resolution?
Two of the three, yes, sir, in that order.
And how do you define if there's not available?
How would you define if they're not available?
Well, I mean, I'll draw you a resolution you may not be happy with, but.
Well, we could pick on it then.
I'd prefer guidance so that you don't expend extra city funds drawing up resolutions and redoing them.
Good, good advice. Thank you kindly. Maybe somebody else has some input that would help guide us. Would you repeat your question, please, or your comment?
Can you define for me how to resolve the issue of when someone is available or unavailable?
Mr. Berry?
I think what the city attorney's asking for is if one of the major cosigners cannot be found within three hours, six hours, 12 hours, a period of time, then it goes to the next, obviously, the mayor pro tem. I think it's what you're kind of looking toward.
That's what I'd like.
Okay. I guess my question, this kind of goes to Yvonne and the city attorney, should we have a fourth signee? I mean, I'm not sure. We're having two people signing checks right now, if that's correct, so it'd be the mayor and city clerk. If the mayor was off on vacation and the city clerk was sick or something, God forbid with some contagious disease or something, we couldn't go to your house, so that would leave me in town. I mean, is it, and I don't know, this is all new. I mean, how many do we have now, three? Three people eligible?
Three.
Okay.
Three on their hands.
And we've never had a problem with the three. Okay. I guess that's one question. And then the third question directed to city clerk, I mean, to the treasurer, I mean, finance director, if I may, is what is a good time period? How often, when somebody's not available? A day, two days, 24 hours, six hours?
Well, as you said, it depends. If somebody's on vacation, you know, then.
Well, yeah, but, I mean, within hours, I mean, how important do those checks need to be signed within 24-hour period, 48-hour period?
Well, we have a designated time when checks are available. Payroll, of course, is Friday. And we try to, we have people that have direct deposit, we have others that have actual checks written. And so we try to get those employees paid before noon, so they have their checks, so they can go to the bank at their lunch hour. And then there's also some bills along with payroll that we need to get sent off, and we try to get those done by four o'clock on Friday for the post office. And then the next week, we try to get checks out by the mail on Friday by four. And they're usually done by one o'clock on Friday afternoon. So there's a three-hour gap, or three-hour window for the review of whoever's signing the checks and the invoices, so that they go out on Friday at four, so that we don't have to, we have them all in the mail before the weekend.
If we had something, and I don't know how to quite word this, but a notification of six, eight, eight hours, the day before, somebody wasn't going to be available, that would be sufficient time.
Yes, sir.
To know that the person's going to be absent. I guess that's what, and that's what we're trying to get to.
Yes.
Mr. Weaver?
I understand you're correct. What you're saying is you would be notified the day before. How does that cover contingency for sudden illness or, I just want to be clear. I'm not trying to.
I'm sure we're trying to get to.
Mr. Pownell, I'm sorry.
Well, I thought the way Ms. Balance made the motion the last meeting was very acceptable in having this client as the fourth, with something in the record showing that that would be an exception versus, you know, the rule for the auditor. Four people, I mean, with the notice that checks are going to need to be signed, excuse me, I don't see why we need to pay the city attorney any more money than he's already getting to write a resolution that we don't need. I think the motion that was made was, the order was perfect.
Okay.
I will withdraw my motion and allow Mr. Pownell to state the motion perhaps, if he is willing.
Motion, Ms. Balance, yeah. Ms. Balance has withdrawn her motion. Who made the second on?
Mr. Pownell.
Doc, you withdraw your second?
Yes.
On her motion, okay. Now, you defer to Mr. Pownell?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Pownell, would you restate?
Since we've been put in this quandary, make a motion that the signatory order with two required signatures be the mayor, city clerk treasurer, mayor pro tem, with the finance directors, the fourth, and only in the cases that.
Be avoided.
Everybody understand the motion? Is there a second?
Does that still define when and how you defer?
That's up for him to worry about. That's a strategy.
Actually, you're creating a law.
Yeah, I can't.
I will second that motion, and I will amend it to say that the, if the first or second signatory is not available.
Okay.
In an eight-hour period, it will fall to a third.
Okay.
And the fourth only on cases of extreme emergency. And the fourth only on cases of extreme emergency.
I'll accept that as an amended motion. Two working days.
Okay, you guys are going to have to restate these motions, because you keep changing Do you have the final motion, Ms. Clerk? I got lost about two motions ago.
Excuse me, I understood the motion, the amended motion, to be that the order for signing would be the mayor, the city clerk treasurer, the mayor pro tem, and the finance director in case of emergency with eight hours' notice.
Yeah, I thought I heard two days.
Initially, I heard eight hours, and then later it was interpreted as two days, so I left it at eight hours.
Okay. Is it? Okay. So, now it's eight hours. Everybody understand that motion?
Yes.
Okay, now...
Do you have a second?
Yeah, we have to have a second. Doc seconded the amended motion. All right, we voted on the amended motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, now, we'll go back to the original motion. No? Well, we have to go back if we amended the motion to have Mr. Weaver draw up a resolution and have the mayor, city clerk...
That one's gone.
That one's gone. Okay. Okay, I'm lost as a goose now. Yeah.
You guys just have to coordinate who's gone on Fridays. That's all it is.
Yeah. Would you reread the motion as you understand it, Ms. Clerk? Because there again, I'm lost.
If we just stick with the amended motion, it won't tangle up with the earlier discussion.
We have to go back to another motion, though, since it's been amended?
Actually, the motion was to amend it.
She withdrew, Lenny withdrew, excuse me?
The motion was to amend it. So, she's now amended it. Now, you have to approve it as amended.
Which we did.
That's what just happened.
Yeah, that one just did.
I withdrew my first motion. Mr. Pannell restate.
Mr. Pannell made the motion, and you made a motion to amend it...
Yes.
...which was seconded by Doc, but the vote was then to vote for the change, not for the original motion made by Mr. Pannell.
Correct.
Okay.
Will it make it easier if I amend my motion to the amended second?
No, it's now amended, but you have to approve it as amended.
We voted on the amended motion. Now, where does it revert? Where does it revert back to?
Now, you're back to Mr. Pannell's motion as amended by Ms. Balance's amendment, seconded by Doc.
Okay.
So, you're voting to approve it as amended.
Still with us?
Robert's Rules of Order as amended, two-thirds roll call vote. Anything that's two-thirds has to be a roll call vote, and to pass, that's four of six.
When the last vote was taken...
The final.
Was it not six, zero, zero?
On the amended motion, yeah.
Correct, to amend it.
Right.
Where is the two-thirds coming in?
Robert's Rules of Order.
Where did you hear four votes, four and two again?
That's two thirds, no, 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 I'm just saying, as a reminder, since we re-adopted Robert's Rules of Order revised, it does state that anything that requires a two-thirds or majority, which is four votes, has to be roll called.
Okay, my understanding now is she amended it for the eight hours. Is that correct? And it was seconded. We voted on it, and it reversed back to the amended motion, reversed back to the original motion as amended, and that's the one we vote on now. So, basically, we're voting on the amended motion again, so...
Well, that vote that was taken was to determine whether to or not to amend Mr. Pannell's motion. Now, you're voting on the motion as amended.
Okay. The motion as amended, the way I understand it, is to have Mr. Weaver draw up a resolution and have him amend it.
No, 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 no.
That's gone.
Okay. All right. Somebody tell me what the second, the...
I like to see folks draw their motions and start from scratch. This is getting stupid.
It is a bit complicated.
Point of order.
I mean, it's not that big of a deal.
Okay, well, we have to do it in a certain way, though, to get it right. Otherwise, the resolution won't be the paper it's wrote on. All right, so what, do you understand the motion to be now?
The motion, as I understand it, would be Mr. Pannell's motion to approve the following people in the following order: mayor, city clerk, pro tem, and finance director.
Okay, that's what I was trying to read, everybody kept saying, no.
Within an eight-hour window, if one of them is unavailable, to move down the list.
In a resolution. Okay, that's what I kept trying to say, and everybody kept saying, no.
Well, they're not going to draw an actual written resolution.
Okay, all right, so scratch the resolution. All right, that is the motion. Is there a second on it? As amended?
Second.
Made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hope not. Okay.
I don't know.
Think this to get us back on track, wouldn't it, Mr. DeVito?
I would try.
Okay.
Do you want a roll call? Just like a pass.
He don't get the roll call, like you said, roll call. Yeah, so, do a roll call vote, I guess. I think it's good like it is. Now, folks, this doesn't have to be this hard, okay?
No kidding.
All right? So, it, I don't want another 11-hour, five-and-a-half-hour meeting. It doesn't have to be this hard, and it's getting ridiculous. So, as that one, it's done. Is that correct? We voted on it? It is as it is. All right.
I move to take a seven-minute recess.
Motion for a seven-minute recess? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Be back in seven minutes. All right, we're back in session. For a matter of clarification on the last ordinance, or the last item under unfinished business, I want to make sure that surety bonds was included in the motions as far as signatories goes, because it was checks and surety bonds on here. Is that the understanding of the council?
Yes.
Pannell?
No.
It was not?
There are other activities, of course, that are required by city code to have surety bonds. And with all the changes at CAPC and any other activities that spend city money, I'd like to see a list of current surety bond people other than just the four.
Mr. DeVito?
We need an amendment to that motion.
Well...
It's nothing to do with this. It was separate.
Okay, because if we don't deal with it now, it'll have to be brought back up, and we have to do this all over again.
I move to amend the motion to require the four signers to have surety bonds.
Were you not listening?
Well, it wasn't written into the motion, is all.
Yeah, that's true. It was not written in the motion.
Second.
All right, let's do this right. All right, on the previous question, is that correct? We bring it back up with the motion to discuss. All right, we need to make...
Motion to discuss.
Is there a second? All right, all in favor? Discussion? Aye? Okay, now, in reference to the previous question, which was the signature, signatories on checks and surety bonds, the matter of the signature bonds was not addressed, to my understanding. Is that the understanding of the council?
Yes.
Okay, now, we need to address that, otherwise it will be a separate issue at a later time, which we can address it now, since it's all a matter of signatures.
Mayor, Mr. ...
Yes, yes. Ms. Yvonne?
The city through the state, our state turnback monies, has surety bonds coverage with a blanket fidelity bond that covers. The policy coverage is this: coverage is provided for losses incurred by the municipality as a result of fraudulent and dishonest acts committed by municipal employees or officials. Municipal public official and public, or municipal public employee means any elected officer of the municipalities and the employees or deputies of any elected officer, specifically including salaried municipal employees of municipality-owned utilities, members of the city council, including the mayor and the members of the various municipal boards and commissions, but excluding officials and employees of municipal hospitals, nursing homes, and improvement districts. The cost for this insurance is $114.46, and as I said, the premiums are paid by our state turnback monies. This policy limit is $250,000 per occurrence. The policy deductible is $1,000 per occurrence. This includes everybody in the city except for parks, the cemetery commission, and, hold me, hospital, thank you. They all each have their own policies paid for by their budget that is covered under bear and sweat insurance. So, the surety bonds are covered, basically, already.
Mr. Bear?
So, in essence, what you're saying is we don't need to do anything.
No, sir. And a phone call could have rectified this being up placed on the agenda.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion on that? I guess since it's, it's still an open issue, is it not, Mr. Weaver?
It would be.
Okay. All right. All in favor of leaving as previously stated on the previous question? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that one carries. In the new business, we have moved the Basin Park project presentation to number one. All right, guys, you got the floor.
Good evening. My name is Rick Armley. I'm one of the original members of the Basin Park Improvement Committee, and we appreciate this opportunity to bring the council and the city at large up to date on the Basin Park project. And in order to be as brief as possible and hopefully not forget anything, I hope y'all won't mind if I just read this. First, a brief history of the Basin Park Improvement Committee. In early 2003, because of its concern about the overall condition of Basin Park, a group of citizens approached the mayor and requested that a member of council, parks commission, HTC, and the planning commission join with us in the form of a committee to develop a plan to address the issues in the park. We first met in March of 2003. Our initial actions were to write a mission statement and to make a list of what we consider to be the top 10 functions of the park. The committee later inventoried the park's assets and prioritized its concerns. We also asked the University of Arkansas Architectural School of Landscaping to accept Basin Park as a class project, which they agreed to. After extensive park user surveys, studies of traffic patterns, and in-depth analysis, the students presented 12 plans of proposed changes and improvements at the public presentation to the city in November of 2003. Their focus was on the flow of water, people, and history. While many of the ideas were beyond the scope of our mission, we did ultimately adopt several of their ideas, including their concept of designing pathways to draw people in and circulate around the park. Finally, after we had processed all of the information we had gathered, we produced a master plan for the Basin Park, which we presented to and was approved by the Parks Commission. Our first efforts in implementing the master plan included an engineered design for a UV filtering system to make Basin Park, Basin Spring potable, and the arch Basin Spring sign at the front of the entrance of the park. Regrettably, the filtering system was rejected by the state because of current health regulations, but we believe that judgment could possibly change at some time in the future. The Basin Spring sign was installed with the generous help of the Eureka Springs Rotary Club and dedicated on July 4th, 2004, Eureka's 125th birthday. The sign has been enthusiastically accepted as an important feature of the park. Unfortunately, mostly because of lack of funds, not much has been done in the way of basic infrastructure repair over the last eight years since the BPIC first met. In the fall of 2010, the Parks Commission called the BPIC to help them with the Eureka Springs Preservation Society donation proposal to repair the fountain in Basin Park. After considerable study, it was determined that the fountain was originally built on filled dirt without a footing, and that to repair the fountain properly would require that it be dismantled, a footing dug and poured, and the fountain to be rebuilt. We also discovered that the well, access well between the basin well and the fountain had deteriorated to the point that park employees no longer felt safe to enter the well for routine maintenance. The basin well is also in need of stone repair. If the stones in these wells continue to clapse, not only is there a possibility of personal injury, but there is a very real threat to the integrity of the original basin itself. Two other items that have been, always been high on our list of concerns are the statue, the basin which also needs stonework and great repair, and the need to relocate to another part of the park to enhance the visibility of the band shell, as well as the safety issues with the raised semicircle in front of the band shell, which we feel is a serious trip hazard, and would like to retain the design element but lower its level to the rest of the park floor. Because of the extensive nature of the required work to repair the core of the park, it seems logical and prudent to the committee to also consider replacing the entire floor of the park. That logic was also extended to take on that part of the master plan to expose the basin, since much of the work to do so needed to be done anyway. Recognizing that there are no city or park funds to support the scope of this needed work, thus was born the concept of selling bricks, benches, and plaques, as well as solicitations of private donations. This unique funding opportunity allows us to finance this entire proposed project without the use of public dollars or city funds. We are confident that we have found a way to pay for these critically needed and overdue repairs without burdening the taxpayers.